Good evening. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Tell them who can remove their hats, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Spinks? Here now. Coche?
Here.
Mizak?
Here.
Janutus?
Here.
Fluhard?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Rhodes?
Here.
Costly, you have the minutes of the work session of November 5th, 2018. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, could I have a motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll.
Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhard?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of November 5th, 2018. Any corrections on that one? All of them. Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Mizak, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Spinks? Yes. Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhard?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Well, good. Now comes, yeah, one of my favorite duties here. Swearing a new officer. I always like this part when we get the new and, in this case, experienced new blood to the department. Being a police officer in Cleveland, I believe you were?
Yes.
Okay, so that's good. You get hit the ground running and get you out there pretty quickly and get you familiar with town. That's excellent. That's always good. Let me do this part, we'll make it official, and then we'll go from there. Raise your hand, state after name. Hi, Mr. Roberts. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the City of Bedford?
And the Charter and laws of the City of Bedford.
And faithfully?
Faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of the position of patrolman?
Discharge the duties of the position of patrolman.
Of the City of Bedford, Ohio?
The City of Bedford, Ohio.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We gotta do the, make it official there. And also let's get you paid, too.
Congratulations.
If you would like to introduce your family, or let's do the badge thing.
Hope he's got his vest on, though.
I just moved with my family here, my fiancee, my best friends, my goddaughter. My fiancee is Bree. Our, our best friend, Dewan and James, my brother in the back, Larry, and Maxine, and my niece and her son, Marty, Mario, my eldest sister, Sandy.
Welcome to Bedford, sir.
Welcome to Bedford.
And Marty, if you'd like to...
Yeah, I'd just like to welcome Larnell and his family and friends here, of course, and I'd like to thank the city administration, city council, and civil service commission for making this hiring possible. We worked on one officer since Officer Duncan left for another position in Willoughby Police Department. So Larnell's a welcome addition, and he brings with him some good experience from Cleveland, which will benefit us. So welcome aboard. Larnell, I just want to give you a couple words of wisdom. So throughout your career here, I just want you to remember to be true to yourself, true to your family, true to our department, and always honor the badge. Congratulations.
Yeah, you guys.
Thank you.
You don't want to go too far.
Thanks, thanks. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Hey, y'all don't have to leave, but... Alright, good. Let's get on with old business. Ordinance number 9653-18.
To make appropriations for current expenses and expenditures of the City of Bedford during the year 2019 and declaring an emergency.
It's our wish to put that on second reading. Motion for such by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluhard?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Reports, Mr. Malice.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items, real quickly. Our crews continue to be out. We currently have three of our main crews out making passes through the city. They will get to the, each and every street. Please be patient with us. Hopefully, we can continue, and the weather continues to cooperate with that. With that being said, as long as the weather stays the way it is, we will continue to be out making various patches. And there are still a couple permission touch bases that we need to complete. You know, throughout the course of this year, we've actually replaced upwards of 30. So the service department's really been doing a good job trying to get those necessary repairs, some of those issues that have been lingering for some time addressed. So they've been hustling this year. I did want to get a quick update regarding Dominion and the Lincoln Project. You know, they are moving forward with that. They're gonna be getting the hard restoration complete as far as the walks. But the soft restoration, obviously, we're not gonna accept any grass being planted in November. They do know they're gonna need to come back out in the spring. We did ask them to fill any low areas, lay straw on that over top just to make sure that there's no safety hazards. If any of those areas would sink or settle, they will be backed out to address that in the winter. But in the spring, they will come back out for all of the soft restoration, grass planting, hydro seeding of all of that area to make sure that it's all cleaned up and buttoned up. And we will have, you know, a final punch list in the spring with Dominion. I do want to mention, I'm sure Dot will mention as well, but December 8th is Christmas in Bedford Falls. That's a great event. There's a lot of effort, a lot of hard work from a lot of individuals. So if you're around, please stop down for that. Obviously, this week, or this Wednesday, 6:00 PM sharp, we have our annual tree lighting. Our staff's been doing a great job getting all of the decorations and things installed. One of the things this year that we were able to do as far as saving, we started last year and we did this year as well, is almost the entire square, everything will be LED. A few years back, we were unable to go up a lot of, some of the trees, and we were unable to expand that display just because of the amount of lights needed. It was, there wasn't sufficient power there. So we looked at it, and we said we needed to move forward with LED and cut that, you know, cut that down. And the service department, Clint and Sean, have done a great job on that this year. They made the remainder of the purchases. And like I said, I want to say it's 90 to almost 100% of the display will be LED. So definitely it'll be bright and look very nice. I also want to mention that, thank, or thank everyone that took the time out to fill the survey, fill out the online survey. We had, I believe, over 100, 120-some individuals fill that out. There was a survey for Bedford and signage and wayfinding signs. All of that was done to kind of create a blueprint for the city and the administration. And now we're looking to go ahead and obtain grant dollars for all new signage, be it gateway signs, secondary signs, signs for the historic district, parks. All of those markers, to make sure they're consistent. You know, it's not to say that our signs that we have now and the wayfinding isn't adequate, but you know, we want to, we want to update a lot of that, we want to enhance a lot of that. And you know, I think we can definitely look to improve on that. And part of this study and plan that Guide Studio did for us, for those of you that weren't here a few months ago, they've worked with cities such as Kent, University Circle, Lakewood, on their sign project, Sandusky. So they have a great track record. And the blueprint that they put in front of us is gonna be very beneficial as we go and apply for funding to start this project. So thank you if you took the time out to do that survey, it was appreciated. Blasted, wish everyone a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving, and end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Montello, same, same here, and said, "Go Buckeyes." Other than that, have a good Thanksgiving. Mr. Gambosi?
A few items tonight. First of all, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Great to have a good one this Thursday. Want to congratulate Larnell Roberts again, one of our greater officers that we're gonna see great things out of him, I believe. He has a great history with the Cleveland Police Department, and he'll be a great character. So I believe he'll be a great addition to our city staff. At the same time, I'd like to ask the civil service members to stand, please. If you would mind, thank you, thanks for their service. Appreciate their time and effort. Agenda two, we have Dell for reappointment and Richard for a newly appointed person for our civil service. And I really appreciate their time and effort. They do a great job for our city and they're very respected people in our community. And have your best interest in mind all the time we do our hires. So I appreciate their efforts. And finally, something coming up in our tax department. As you know, I don't know how many people here do the online tax system. But December 12th, we do have a new demo program that's available, so I can do presentations now to show people how to use that system, how to register. So on December 12th and January 9th, we're going to have, it probably won't take more than a half an hour, but between the hours of 6:00 and 7:00, here at City Hall, I will have open time where I'll show everybody a presentation of how you'll enter onto the system and how you'll get your own PIN or password for it as a better security system. We've used our other one over 15 years now. Was state-of-the-art, it won awards when it was first brought out to the city. But as time goes on, there's some better features that are out there in the new program that basically the price they offered us, we couldn't refuse. It was a great deal for us. And for that, we look forward to implementing the new program. Some of it very similar to what we're doing now, some of it just a little bit different, and I'll be able to show you that. And perhaps working with Heather, and I were discussing earlier how we could maybe even put a online program so you could see it, so we don't have to just have the two meetings. We'll be able to see how to utilize the system. But look forward to working with everybody on that on December 12th and 9th from the hours of 6:00 to 7:00, we'll be here, here at City Hall. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Spinks?
Congratulations to our new officer. Best of luck to him. I'm gonna tell off. I want to thank our mayor publicly for last night taking a pie in the face for our youth group at the Church of Asa Rain. Last night was our annual dessert auction. And he saved another member of our church from getting a pie in the face. He was so gracious to do it. And there was one resident that was willing to bid $100 to put a pie in his face, but he didn't want to take the bid away from the mayor's very own wife. She paid $35 to put a pie in his face. And I think he still has cool up in his nose. You know, so that was a great event. Our kids do a lot, a lot of our kids go to our school here. So we've got a huge youth group, and so that's a very good thing. Our church is very involved with our city. Most of our churches here are, we're very blessed to have so many churches that get involved with the city. They meet here every Thursday to pray for our city. So that's, that's a really amazing thing. Last week, had the pleasure of going to Los Angeles, to the National League of Cities. Sad part was while we were there, the first day that we were there was a horrible, horrendous nightclub shooting. I was sitting the next day with the mayor of Thousand Oaks, and she was very upset. And we had one of our presenters who was not able to make it because their son was killed in that. And then the fire hit the very next day. So it was, it's still, I believe, there's still 993 that are accounted for. There's 77 as of right now for the death toll. That was in the camp, I think. So they're still, they're hoping to have this completely put out by the 31st. But heart, my heart goes out to these families that have lost their homes and relatives and others. A heartache for them. While we were out there, it was, there was 52 workshops. It was, and it was four blocks. I got my exercise, I got my, I think I got 21,000 steps in while we were there because they wanted to charge you $20 to go around the corner, and I was walking it. So I walked, I got to see a lot of homeless people. But while we were out there, it was, it was amazing. 52 workshops, I think I was able to go to about 20 because a lot of them corresponded, being the mayor would get mad. But a lot of the roundtable discussions were amazing. One of our guest speakers of the closing day was Marie Schiaver, and that was very amazing. But met this author, James Hunt, and he was, he's been our past president of National League of Cities. And he's written his book, Amazing City. And it's just, it's really neat. Amazing City, it comes through attitude, motivation, attention to detail, zing. What's the zing of your city? I got to thinking about, what's the zing of our city? And there wasn't just one thing I could put my thumb on. It was a lot that makes us a little bit different. Attitude, did we need to work on that one? Motivation, there's a lot of them. The book is giving me a lot of stuff. But it talks on there, you know, to get your residents to have positive. You're always gonna have negative, no matter what you do. You're always gonna have negative attitude. And that's probably been one of the hardest things for me as a resident, as a city council. It's tough to take it. It's tough to hear, to see things, to read things, especially a lot of times when it's not true. It's not an easy job up here. This is a tough job. This is probably one of the toughest jobs I've probably ever had, but one of the most gratifying jobs I've probably had. Because I love Bedford, I love where I live. And I kind of got scolded because I told someone, "Well, if you hate it so bad, it's so bad, there's nothing but good stuff, why do you live here?" And they didn't like that answer, but I feel that way, too. I've lived several places. I've lived in Shaker, I still work in Shaker. I've lived in Nable, I've lived in Garfield, I've lived in, and I will take Bedford any day. Do we have our problems? Yeah. Look around you, every city, even these big cities. And that's another thing I learned at National League of Cities. I was sitting, talking to people that have 70,000 residents, and they have the same problem as we do. And we have a lot of things that they, you know, they have a lot more money than we do. So we do pretty good for what we have, and I thank our city manager for that. I thank council for that. And I thank our mayor for that. Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mizak?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to all and congratulate our new police officer. He will be quite a help to our force that we still have to completely fill in with other future officers. I think we can use him. And he brings knowledge from Cleveland in how to take care of people, just like he will do for Bedford, so. I'm proud of him already. I just want to touch upon one thing. Michael Lee, he touched upon the leaf collection. We didn't get ours picked up yet, but when the trucks come around, there'll be plenty that do. But a lot of people still don't realize they should not put them in the street. It's just like driving on black ice sometime. You can, on a wet leaf, you can, if you're going slow, it's okay. But if you ride around on the streets, don't look at your mileage or how fast you're going, you can get yourself wrapped around a pole if you don't pay attention. Another thing is, now, she's not here this evening, but every year when we have our lights, our lighting ceremony at the square, the church, the First Baptist Church of Bedford, does a Lights Out for Hunger. So therefore, I believe it's the night that we do our lighting ceremony, during the Christmas holiday. There's a designated day where you don't run your Christmas lights and all the lights on your outside of your house. And whatever you save on your electrical bill, the church would appreciate the money to take care of the hunger, the food for the hungry. I've been with this program as a donator, and also because I respect the wishes of Beth and other people that do support this request. I think if we help one another, things work out better. And I think that if we come with an open mind, things will work out better. So I think we are in a world of change, and a lot of us that are older than 40, I'll just give this a little way, have to realize that our world and our time is going faster. And either we accept the new changes, or try to accept them, things will work out better. So on that note, I want to say, enjoy your holiday with your family, which is Thanksgiving. Eat a lot of jerky, take a little walk. If you want dinner dessert, maybe come to my house. Have a good one.
Thank you. And just to touch on the Lights Out for Hunger, it's December 19th, Wednesday. And they'll take more money than just what you save on your electric. The nice thing is, the money goes through the Southeast Clergy. First Baptist is handling the mailing. And they distribute the money and the food in January and February. After, you know, right now, people are getting all kinds of meals, and January, February, we tend to forget, we're worried about all those bills that are coming in from Christmas. So they dish out the food, how do you say, in February and Mar, or January, March, so to extend that giving season. So it's really a good thing. It was started by a woman that had talked to Beth Osseo Stewart. Said, "Wouldn't it be nice if we just turned off all these lights and took all the money that we saved from electricity and give it to the hunger center?" And she remains anonymous. I don't know who it is, Beth won't tell me. Don't want to know. But I think it's just a great idea, and I would hope other cities would jump on a bandwagon. Walton Hills, and I think Oakwood participates in it also, so it's a good thing. That, Mr. Janutus?
Thank you. Well, a lot of good things happening. I think that the, high in the face of the mayor, I think that has a lot of potential to go somewhere. Did it work on that? At least make it some kind of tradition. Although, I thought I was the zing of the city, but I guess not.
Of course not, yes.
Well, I really don't have the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fluhard?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate the service department for the leaf program. They have been by my house twice, so I appreciate it. And also, if they could help out for the people that aren't putting their leaves on the curb and they're just collecting in the gutters and the, or the streets and the sewers and stuff, if the guys can sweep those up a little bit. You can almost tell somebody they're gonna be cooperating, so, you know, because they're only gonna be out for a little bit longer, and we don't need all those leaves on the streets and blocking the sewers and stuff. So a little, they're doing a good job with, you know, a little more help on the raking at the end there when they're needed. I also want to thank everyone for a very happy Thanksgiving. And I only have one shout-out tonight, and that's to my wife, whose birthday is tomorrow. And I don't, won't say her age, but she's got about four and a half, four, three and a half hours, in her 50s left.
Yeah, that is the end of your report.
It's all over now, come on.
We don't see you next thing, we'll know. Mr. Saunders?
Yes. Mike, you mentioned the Lincoln gas line work. Have they given you any timetable as to how and when they're gonna clean that up? Because people on that street are really worried because it is now mid-November, and we could get hit with snow at any time. And they're worried that the yards and driveways and the street itself and all of that aren't gonna be cleaned up enough before massive winter storm might hit.
They, they should be doing the walks and all that over the next week or so for the hard restoration. Like I said, a lot of the other restoration won't be done until the spring. Lawn and things like that.
Okay, well, I hope we keep an eye on the walks and stuff because if they salt it sometime this winter, they're gonna be all pitted and falling apart by next spring, too. Just in case anybody doesn't know, I'm in a shoulder sling only because I have a shoulder replaced. It'll be two weeks tomorrow, so I've got full movement. When they say, "Don't push, pull, or lift," the only way that's gonna keep me really mad is to keep it in the sling. So even though I don't need the sling anymore, that's why it's still there. They can rebuild you these days, so it would be as good as new here, sure. Just to make a brief comment, I don't know how many of you use IQ 71 through Bedford. That roadway has been tied up now for some time. I don't know if you've been over there since the last few weeks when they've done all the lane shifts and new entrance and exit ramps and so forth. I really pity the people that will be on that street if we get anything of any sizable snowfall because you're not gonna be able to get onto the freeway, you're not gonna be able to get off the freeway, and you're not gonna be able to travel the freeway because there's nowhere to put the snow. Which means, once again, like we've had several accidents during the summer, Northfield and Broadway, they're gonna be packed bumper to bumper through town. So I hope that we reflect that message to ODOT to let them know that even though they claim their construction isn't increasing traffic on either road this year, that it certainly is. And we have a problem with that, and that they better start making plans to repair the streets when they're done in two years. 2020 is when that project is scheduled to be finished. So we've got a long way to go yet. Now, they did make up some time this year because it was a semi-dry summer. So hopefully, maybe, they'll get it done late next year. But we still got another year of this, and the way they've squished everything right now, this is the wrong time of year to squish the lanes like that. So having been in highway construction for quite a number of decades, this is gonna be an interesting time. The other thing I wanted to bring up was thank all the residents and non-residents and people from the area that attended last night's Bedford Salvation Army annual chicken and ham dinner fundraiser. We had, from what it looks like, over 200 people there last night, which was a great turnout because we actually started running out of food. So that's a good sign because that provides us with the money necessary to do food baskets for Thanksgiving and Christmas. All the money stays local, so it is all used in the community itself. And starting on Friday, the kettles that are at Sam's Club and at Giant Eagle are also for the Bedford Salvation Army. They do not go downtown, they also stay local. So please patronize that. It goes to a very good cause. And hopefully, we'll make enough money to be able to fund the programs throughout the whole next year with it. And closing, I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and we'll see you Wednesday night on the square.
Thank you. Mrs. Rhodes?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. So I'm gonna start out by saying thanks for coming. Happy Thanksgiving. And the reason I say that is because we have Thanksgiving, and then we have Black Friday, and then we have a very important day after Black Friday, and that's Small Business Saturday. The reason I'm bringing that up is because we have our downtown area that has several shops. I hope that all of you will strive to purchase something in our downtown area on Small Business Saturday, or any other day, but especially on Small Business Saturday. We will be distributing flyers at the... We will be distributing flyers at the tree lighting that lets you know what shops we have down there, as well as restaurants and bars. A lot of times, we don't think about our money and how we spend it, but when we spend it locally, that money stays local. And that's part of the really important part of Small Business Saturday, is to help you understand that about how you do your Christmas shopping. So, you know, Friday, go to Walmart, get that deal on that TV, I understand, but Saturday, come on back to Bedford and do some shopping. I'd also like to announce that the Reader's Digest had named Bedford one of the 12 towns you must visit in the United States for Christmas celebrations. So we did see a very nice spike on the Christmas in Bedford Falls website due to that article, which was kind of fun. So, you know, we have a very special thing in our downtown area, especially at Christmas time, so I hope all of you will take some time this Christmas season to head on down, look at the lights, maybe do a little shopping, and tell your friends and family about it. Thank you very much, and see you two weeks.
Thank you. Yeah, I also went out to the National League of Cities last week, and again, it's just such a fantastic organization and bring back so much knowledge. I sit in these classes, my head starts to spin, and gotta stack some things to give to department heads, too, so. Touching them up with some of the stuff we learned out there. And I believe that it was in Country Living magazine.
Oh, it's in both.
Oh, it's in both. By Country Living, I saw that. But it's a great thing, with the 12 you need to see across the country. It's pretty, that's twice, you know, with our best downtown last year and now this one this year. That's great, and hopefully, that'll build on the Christmas in Bedford Falls. It should help, give a nice boost to that. That's always a fun event. And where did Tim, did he leave? Oh, there he is. Wanted to welcome Tim from our school board. Good to see you here, sir. And with that, we're gonna move on to new business.
Ordinance number 9654-18, authorizing the city manager to apply for a community development supplemental grant and a community development block grant, and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for suspension. Spinks, second by Janutus, call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Misak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Misak, second by Saunders. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This is two different grant programs. One, as John said, a supplemental grant that the county made available via the casino dollars, and then the community development block grant is actual federal funds. Block grant is due in March. The supplemental grant, however, is due at the end of this month. What we're doing is, we're applying for these funds for specifically the supplemental grants to kick off the first phase of the plan that Guide Studio provided for signage throughout the city. This ordinance is to simply authorize us for, authorize us to apply for both grants. We have not decided on a project for the $150,000 grant yet, but we'll be making a couple of different recommendations to council over the next month or two, as we gear up for that deadline. And that'll also be discussed at upcoming council meetings.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Misak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9655-18, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the provision of a school resource officer and monitor placement at the high school, declaring an emergency. Well, I guess at any school, but the high school primarily. And motion for suspension by Rhodes, second by Misak. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Misak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Fluharty, second by Spinks. This is just to clean up some language. The state came up with our school resource officer. We have him up there now. We do have a contract, and this is just some legal things. There must have been an attorney down the state didn't have anything to do, so he nitpicked some words, and did not change anything of how he operates or what he does up there, but we have to go along with it, and the school has to also approve the same thing, so we can have our resource officer there.
I just wanted to add that, you know, our officer is Sean Francis. He's been with our department for many years. But I also want to mention, not only the work that he does within the school, but the partnership that we have with the school district, with the superintendent, with the school board, and I'm not saying this because Tim's sitting here, has been outstanding. And, you know, there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of good that comes out of this, a lot of positives, a lot of community policing as far as building relationships with students, building positive relationships. It's not always interacting when something bad is happening. It's interacting when there's good things happening, and building those relationships is key moving forward. I will say that when there might be something that is brewing or whatnot, if they have an officer in a building, it's key, and it's proven to be valuable over all the years that we've been doing this. I appreciate the efforts of the school to obviously wish to continue this and even explore future possibilities of additional resource officers throughout the district that I think would be vital, and the administration would support that effort if it ever came up. I appreciate it, Tim, and please pass that on to Dr. Siller.
Thank you. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Misak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9656-18, amending ordinance numbers 9450-16 and 9522-17, authorizing the city manager to enter into an extension of the lease with option to purchase with MRL LLC for the property located at 600 Solar Road in Bedford, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. It's our wish to put this on first reading. A motion for such, by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Misak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Ordinance number 9658-18.
Amending ordinance number 9528-17, establishing pay ranges as subsequently amended and declaring an emergency.
And again, we want to put that on first reading. A motion for such, by Saunders, second by Rhodes. Again, this is just establishing starting pay ranges. Has nothing to do with pay raises or anything, just like, we have new hires, we have a range that we can hire people, invest based on experience and qualifications and all that. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Misak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
And these next two motions, we put you last, so you'd have to stay here for the
whole meeting. Not really, it just works out. But we have a motion to reappoint James Deljut to the Civil Service Commission, by Misak, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Misak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Great. Yeah. Now, we appreciate, like Frank said earlier, all you guys do for our civil service, and we see the quality of the officers and firefighters we get year in and year out, and how many of them go on to become chiefs in other places, and it's just a strong testament to the dedication and the work that you guys put into hiring these people, and we really appreciate that. And with that, with the next possible appointment here, we're putting a lot on his shoulders to keep that in force.
Keep the standard high, huh?
That's right. A motion to appoint Rich Palcisco to the Civil Service Commission. I have a motion for such, by Rhodes, second by Saunders. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Cochee?
Yes.
Misak?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you. And now, it's the hearing of citizens. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, your address, and your comment. What? I see you pointing. Richard, now back 1252 Broadway. I just wanted to be able to swear again.
We haven't been doing this.
Oh, okay. We don't want to swear. Okay, Scott. I want to agree with you on this situation with 271. There are times it takes me 10 minutes to get out of my driveway. There is so much traffic because of that construction. There are days when it's backed up from 271 all the way to the hill, and that's both ways some days. And the road is just getting torn up, something terrible. And by springtime, I expect to see a lot of big holes over there. So if you guys want to say something to the state, I'll be the first to stand up there and say something, because it is happening. That's all I want to say.
I will say, we did, we actually put it in writing, just so everybody knows. We wrote to state a letter, oh, three months ago, I believe. It went from our engineer. They challenged us on the truck traffic. They challenged us on all the traffic. They said it has not increased. We made sure we did put that in writing, so if the time did come, you know, we did make them aware. So we're familiar.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dick Badger, 69 Wondell. I just wanted to mention that I had, I was fortunate to have the leaf department at my house this week, and just unreal the energy that's expended by those guys holding that tube, which is whipping them, whipping them, whipping them.
Sucked the guy up last week. Pardon me? No, I'm joking. I'm joking. I had you thinking, didn't I?
But anyhow, that's the reason. I told the troops, I said, "I want to be at council Monday." I said, "I want to bring it up to the congregation here and tell them that what they do is fantastic." I've never seen just two young lads, well, probably not that young, but anyhow, I'm staying with that chute, and they rake, and it's just unbelievable. So thanks to the service department, and possibly the city manager or anything like that, so, okay, thank you.
And our best to you, René.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy Williams, 491 Lamson. Bless their hearts, we haven't seen the leaf guys in two weeks. Through this house. The question I have in my head, and what was going on on Facebook, the dumping that is in that target area, so who do you contact? Because I think the owners are not Ohio.
Actually, the owner's George Gudrow.
Still?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
He was contacted twice, actually. The last time was, today's certified letters went out to him.
And there is no way that they could, well, that would be up to him to put chains or whatever, so that they put an illegal dump, correct?
Correct.
It would be up to him?
Correct.
All right, well.
He questioned the patrol, but we had a pretty hearty debate back and forth. He was asked a thousand and a half weeks ago, or we actually, I don't believe it was a month, but he was asked then to politely address that. He chose not to. And he was, again, this morning, we had people out there, 7:30, that took updated photos, and he was sent a certified letter ordering that to be cleaned up. If not, he'll have to record. But he still owns that piece of property.
Okay. And the dumpster behind the daycare center that's on the corner of Columbus and Northfield, and, you know, you have the tattoo place, the daycare, well, the dumpster, you can see it, it is overflowing to the point where now it's on the ground.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And just, I did get your message and made that report, just so you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator 286 Marion, couple things. You wrote a letter to ODOT regarding the traffic. Has anybody ever taken pictures? Because I tell you, if it took me more than a minute to get out of my driveway, I'd have pictures and timestamps and everything instead of that. That's ridiculous. But I mean, you know, I mean, pictures do a lot more justice than a strong-worded letter, in my opinion. I'm not in the market of thanking companies for leaving Bedford, but I would just like to, I guess publicly thank US Bank. They moved a year or so ago, and they were cleaning out their building, and they offered the school district quite a lot of furniture, partitions, office supplies, at no cost to us, just donating it, and we figured it was right around $20,000 to the school. So I'd like to publicly thank US Bank for that, even though they left us, but it was a nice gesture on their part. And Kathy, thank you, everyone, on behalf of the school board.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anything from the library?
No, unless you want me to know.
A little prod, a little prod. Works every time.
Actually, I'm Sarah Bunnati, representing 331 Marion Drive. So you have the resident this evening. I don't have any complaints or anything like that, but I do remember that I came here, it's almost exactly two years ago, and we made a very emotional plea for officers, and I just want to say thank you, because in two years, I think we just like sworn in four or five, so I remember that. So thank you.
Thank you.
I was with Rich Palcisco once, explained his best. Mike, in regards to the officer that's at the high school, is he just strictly at the high school? He's not at either, at either?
Well, he's the SRO for the high school, but he frequently will...
Tramples the other schools?
Will pop into the other schools when he's able to. Pop into a couple of the local, within Bedford, and local grade schools and things like that. So he does make an effort to do that. It's a huge, listen, in a perfect world, you have one at every school. I mean, that's, and I think the schools would share that.
No, that's just a good thing, because, right, the kids, the kids got to have the respect in...
Sure. It's kind of like, it's building those positives. I mean, it's, and we talk about it when our officers are out on Halloween, and it's passing out the candy, and any chance you can have a positive, positive interaction with the youth is a good thing. It's not always when something might be wrong, or they're in trouble. That's not really the case, you know? You want to build those relationships, and having an SRO in the schools and going around to the other schools is very, very important.
And that's a tough job he has up there, too.
Oh, yeah.
And the value to us is he can actually stop... And the value to us is he can actually stop some things from happening before they get on the street and have to call the whole department. I mean, so it's a cost savings and staffing savings that he's in there and can take, control some situations before they get out of hand, which is a good thing. Or he can be there with somebody to lean on so they don't go out and just overreact for some reason. So he, there's tremendous amount of value that the officer provides up there at the school. Anyone else? Seeing none. A motion for adjournment by Spinks, second by Janudis. Call the roll.
Spinks?
Yes.
Coche?
Yes.
Muzak?
Yes.
Janudis?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Well, thank you for coming and have a great Thanksgiving.